Okay, man.
All right. Want to begin the meeting? Go ahead. I call the City Hall.
The meeting of November sixteenth, twenty twenty to order, and I ask you to stand and join us in the fidget.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
He just is.
I have the United States of America. Two Republicans, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have the roll.
Belsa.
Here.
Clistic. Gustafson.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Five present.
We have a quorum. Takes us to questions and comments of a general nature. This is an opportunity for residents to come forward and present their counsel. Many concerns they have that are not necessarily on our agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? If none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes for November second, twenty twenty. I would like a motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any questions or comments? None of the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belsa.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
We move into the food. Takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications they'd like to share? Alderman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a communication from Daniel Flores on sixteen hundred block of Clemmons. His house backs up to Seventy Fifth Street. Before Mr. Hennepurde left, he was had to give the homeowner a violation for his fence. Fence went down during a windstorm a couple of months, about a few weeks back. He's since kind of repaired it somewhat. But he's he sent a receipt to me that I poured it off. He's ordered his fence through Lowe's and almost kind of like what we were talking about with the chicken ordinances. It's like a six to eight week backlog for him to get the fencing. So I've been in communication with him and, you know, and Joe before Joe left the city.
Of course.
Right for you, Chuck. Lester. Vaughn and Vaughn.
Yeah, I have a correspondence from my neighbor. He stopped by just to compliment municipal services. On a great job, on doing a great job with brush pickup, I think some weeks ago when it was raining. He said the guys did an excellent job. He offered to help. He was wondering why they were out in the rain doing brush pickup, but he said he wanted to come, wanted me to compliment you guys publicly to say thank you for all your hard work and service. And making Darien such a great city to be a big part of. Another comment from Jill on eleven hundred block of Timber Lane in regards to her garbage cans, Dan. It's still ongoing. I think she called the mayor as well about the garbage cans. But I just think we need some clarification. Can they have their garbage bins on the side of their house without the storage bin? For the for the raised ranch homes. I mean, like, I, from my understanding, I thought it was just in front of the house you had to have the storage bin, but on the side of your house you didn't have to have your storage bin. So if you can provide some clarity on that.
That is correct. Any type of refuse container can be placed alongside of the house without any type of enclosure. If you want to have it in the front of your home, then you will need to purchase the structure, the structure or container.
Storage bin, yeah.
That's a, that's been authorized.
Yeah, now, Dan.
Except for a corner lot.
Yeah, except for corner lots.
Yes.
So again, just explain the corner lot, please.
Corner lots, you cannot, corner lots obviously are a little more difficult because you really only have one side of the side or the back to be able to put the containers. So there's really only one side, true side, that a corner lot can accommodate without purchasing the storage container and having it in front.
So if you have a side yard, a buddy in the street, you can use the extra container to store the totes from the garbage company?
Correct.
Yep.
Anyone else have anything they want to share? Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. During the high windstorm on Saturday into Sunday, the same grouping of residents in my ward along Carriage Way West subdivision and parts of Brookridge Creek lost power again. This has been an ongoing problem. So I did reach out to our ComEd rep, Phil Hellburton, and he's working on trying to get a video conference with the ComEd reliability team so that we can, you know, further pursue this on behalf of those residents. And there's about eighty-nine residents that have been impacted repeatedly by storms and losing power for anything from a couple of hours to a couple of days. So I've been communicating with two key people on that. I also received communication from Chris Marima from the Waterfall Glen Boulevard area on the north side of I fifty-five there along Frontage Road with a concern about the sixty-six unit apartment apartment complex that is proposed to go up and Dan's been looped in on that trying to clarify the questions regarding that. But the residents were under the impression, the homeowners over there were under the impression it was going to be a condominium complex, not a rental complex. And that's it.
Just for your information, Mary, Saturday night, we saw two large bursts of light from our family room. And we looked out in the back and there are power lines back of our house right over the road behind our house. And a tree branch had hit that and the line was arcing. And so we called Commonwealth Edison and they came and we saw all the homes in back of us had no power. So we called Commonwealth Edison and within about twenty minutes they came out and they took care of that. Now, I don't know if that impacted your residents or if that was just the tree branch that hit the wire and caused the arcing. There was like two explosions that took place. It was like fireworks going off in the backyard. I don't know if that was connected to what you saw.
Yeah, I know the residents have expressed concern, especially over by you, Joe, where they believe extensive tree trimming needs to happen to be preemptive and avoiding these situations down the road. So I just, you know, I think we need to keep the dialogue going because, you know, it is Chicago and we are heading into winter. There's going to be ice and other things happening down the road and, you know, losing power when it's hot is bad enough, you know, but you can fan yourself. You, losing power in frigid weather is even more troubling.
I agree with you because that road behind my home that goes into Brookridge, those trees overhang those wires and it doesn't take much. We've had several outages in our area, as you noted, because of.
And.
Hit a wire.
Yeah, ComEd has said that they're part of the plan or the program for twenty twenty-one, but I think it's more emergent that they happen sooner while they still can this season.
I agree. Anyone else have anything? If not, it takes us to the mayor's report. And I'm very happy tonight to be able to make a proclamation.
Whereas the Darien Women's Club is a local service organization founded in nineteen seventy by a group of enthusiastic women interested in promoting civic pride, cultural improvement, and unity among the women of the city of Darien and surrounding communities. And whereas the Darien Women's Club is a charitable and not-for-profit organization and is affiliated with the Illinois and General Federation of Women's Clubs. And whereas fifty years ago, the main goal of the Darien Women's Club was to provide library services to the community. Through the members' active fundraising efforts, the club was able to purchase books, educational materials, and establish the first bookmobile services for residents and was then able to organize the Darien Volunteer Library. And whereas it was only because of the existence of the Darien Volunteer Library that a government grant was able to be secured to establish the Darien Demonstration Library, which offered expanded services and hours. The Darien Women's Club continued perseverance resulted on Darien's first library visit for its citizens. And whereas to support the following numerous community projects, the energetic members of the Darien Women's Club continued to embark upon innovative fundraising effort endeavors such as children's fall and spring bowling resales, art auctions, house walks, fashion shows, old hanger sales, bridge marathons, candlelight bowls, gift card sales, and lottery gambling. And whereas the members of the Darien Women's Club have performed thousands of hours of community service and have donated over a million dollars to numerous organizations. And whereas the philanthropic efforts of the Darien Women's Club know no boundaries. As the founding organizations have substantially benefited, Indian Prairie La Pablo Library, Our Lady of Mount Carmel, Our Lady of Peace Food Cantry, Darien Historical Society, the Sees Bar, Safety Village of Darien, Darien Blood Drive, local schools, We Care, Darien Police Department, Darien Youth Club, Darien Education Program, Finer Scholarships, Community Service Scholarships, toll stores at nursing homes, Creative Youth Art Fair, TLC Camp for Children with Cancer, and Make a Difference Day. And whereas other philanthropic monies that won at Family Shelter Services, Sharing Connection, DuPage County Women's Shelter, Hinsdale Community Service, Press Cancer Research, Brookfield Zoo, Adopt a Highway, and Living Lands and Waters. And whereas the Darien Women's Club encourages their membership to join numerous interest groups such as golf, bridge, bowling, poker groups, mom and pops, luncheon and dinner groups, phone call. And whereas the Darien Women's Club is unique among women's clubs since its members are ages twenty-four to over eighty years old. Now therefore, I Joseph A. Marques, Mayor of the City of Darien, do hereby proclaim the day of December first, twenty twenty, as Darien Women's Club's day in the city of Darien and congratulate the membership on their fiftieth anniversary. It encourages the citizens of the community to recognize and hold in highest esteem the tremendous efforts and leadership set forth by these outstanding women. Furthermore, I encourage the community's continued financial support of the Darien Women's Club fundraising endeavors. And that sign is by the mayor and my attorney, Dona. And it is my honor to present this to, I believe, Carol Jablonsky and to Jennifer Oberman, who are representatives of this club as well. Jennifer, you're the president.
Please.
You can stand up there. You'd be socially distant.
You want me to come down? Hold it.
I'm Jenny, Jenny O'Connell, President of the Darien Women's Club, here with Carol Jablonsky, who is the chair of our fifth anniversary committee. This would like to thank Mayor Marques and the City of Darien for this honor. And our members of the club continue, look forward to continuing to serve Darien and our neighboring community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. And there's going to be a sign out in front of City Hall commemorating the fiftieth anniversary of the Women's Club. And again, Darien is very fortunate to have service organizations like this. And it's unusual because this year the Women's Club is celebrating their fiftieth and the Lions Club is celebrating their fiftieth. So we have two service organizations both reaching milestones this year. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Carol. That takes me to my second item and my mayor's message. As many of you are already aware, our COVID nineteen positivity rates here in Illinois in Indianapolis County are on upswings. A few months ago, we averaged between four point two and four point five positivity rates over seven days period. And now we have a peak of fifteen point two percent with significant increases in hospitalizations and patients who need ventilators. This next best is just nine long. On October thirteenth, a month ago, hospitals in DuPage County, all the hospitals in DuPage County area recorded eighty-two COVID hospitalizations with twenty-two of those requiring ICU treatment. Today, November sixteenth, those same hospitals reported three hundred and sixty-seven COVID hospitalizations and fifty-eight of them requiring ICU treatment. On Wednesday, November eleventh, the governor's office issued new tier-two rescindations that have placed further restrictions on restaurants and bars as well on meetings and social gatherings and organized groups recreational activities. Indoor and outdoor meetings and gatherings are limited to ten guests. And organized group recreational activities limits groups to ten people or fewer. Bars and restaurants have been limited to outdoor dining with no more than six people at a table. This has become a situation that requires our diligent attention and the collective action of all of our residents. While none of the following is mandated, the following are effective strategies for combating the coronavirus and that mending and flattening occurred. I was recently appointed to a multi-jurisdictional task force in the following or several of the recommendations that mayors in Althea will be issuing. Continue to comply with state, county, and municipal regulations to wear face covering whenever you are out in public or coming outside of your immediate household. The Senate of the Districts Control reinforced the importance of face masks last week, saying they both protect the wearer and other individuals they encounter. When leaving home, continue to practice social distancing by always staying six feet apart from others. Continue to wash hands or use hand sanitizer often. Avoid touching surfaces frequently touched by others. Only leave home to go to work or school or for essential needs such as seeking medical care, going to the grocery store promising, picking up takeout food or receiving orders placed at retail stores. Do not host gatherings in your home with anybody outside of your immediate household except for essential staff such as healthcare workers or educators, even with trusted friends. And avoid all non-essential off-state travel. And again, those are not mandated. These are strongly recommended. I'm also asking that you be attentive to any call you may receive from the DuPage County Health Department when it comes up on your caller ID. People who've been getting these calls and not answering. These calls are covered by contact tracing program and that call may be allergic to you to have that you've been exposed to someone who has been diagnosed with COVID nineteen. Reducing the spread of this disease is our responsibility. And we each have a responsibility to practice caution every time we leave our homes. We also need to know that during the holiday season that is upon us, we need to give thought to family and friend celebration. The CDC and the Illinois Department of Public Health each rate private homes as one of the locations with a higher chance of COVID explosion. Please remember, reducing the spread of this disease is a responsibility we all share. There is some good news that the elements of what I just presented. And that is the work of large pharmaceutical companies such as Niderma and Pfizer in the development of a vaccine that combats and protects against the novel coronavirus. As we receive information regarding these vaccines and when they become available to the public, we will share that with our residents. And again, I ask for all your help and all your assistance and all of us taking a responsibility for not only our health, but for the health of our residents, fellow residents and neighbors. And that concludes my mayor's report and it takes us to our city clerk's report.
Just one item, Mr. Mayor. The Darien City Offices close September thirty, November twenty-sixth, and Friday, November twenty-seventh, and I'm serving some Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Joanne. City Administrator Report, Brian.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Department head, information, questions, any questions for Chief Thomas?
I have a statement. I'm currently quarantining because my wife and two daughters were tested positive for COVID. So I am out of the office. Jason Norton, the deputy chief, is very capable of handling any issues. And I'm still working from home, so I answer all the emails, do all that stuff. So if you need me, cell phone is going to be the best.
Where should you go? Yourself and your family.
Everybody's doing well.
Municipal Services, Mr. Gonda? We're going for Dan. If none, that takes us to the treasurer's report. Treasurer, you have the warrant number twenty twenty-one fourteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this evening I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number twenty twenty-one fourteen in the amount of seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-four cents from the listed funds payroll for the period ended November fifth in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand, one hundred ten dollars and sixteen cents for a total to be approved of nine hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Belsa. Any questions or comments? If none of the roll.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belsa.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The warrant's been approved. The monthly report, Mike?
Oh, thank you. The monthly report for the six months ended October thirty-first reflects year-to-date general fund six-month revenue of eight million, eight hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars, expenditures of six million, six hundred nine thousand, one hundred fifty-six dollars, current balance of three million, two hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred thirty-six dollars. Water fund, your six-month revenue of two million, five hundred fifty-five thousand, twenty-seven dollars, expenses of three million, two hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars, current balance of two million, seven hundred seventy-one thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars. Motor fuel tax, one six-month revenue of eight hundred seventy thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars, expenses of two hundred four thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars, current balance of one million, two hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars. Water depreciation fund, six-month revenue of five thousand, one hundred sixteen dollars, expenses of fifteen thousand, six hundred four dollars, current balance of two million, four hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred six dollars. And capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue of two hundred one thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars, expenses of two hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars for a current balance of six million, five hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and five dollars.
Any questions for the treasurer? Mike, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, lastly, I just wanted to report that we had our quarterly meeting of the Darien Police Pension Fund on November fifth. And the investment advisor who's managing approximately thirty-two million dollars that's in the fund had our investment report for the three months ended September thirtieth. It's a very good quarter. The fund performance yielded a return of four point seven percent net of fees for the quarter. Equity showing an eight point one three percent return, fixed income unfortunately about less, little less than three quarters of a percent return. Trying to get them to go with a little bit more aggressive weighting in the equities, but so far I haven't been too successful in that. But so far it looks like we're having a reasonably good year in the stock market in spite of everything else.
Any questions for Mike? If I have any committee reports, when do the aldermen have anything, understanding committee reports? Mary?
The next admin finance committee meeting will be on Monday, December seventh at six P M. I don't know if it'll be in Zoom or in the conference room, but mark the calendar for December seventh. And the Economic Development Committee met last week and we had a great discussion regarding the chamber and future collaborations as well as how we as an economic development committee and a city can help support our local businesses during these trying times. We're researching various programs, incentives for us to support our local businesses. More to come on that.
Thank you, Mary.
And, oh, one more thing. We are no longer meeting the way we used to in terms of the pattern. Our new meeting date is the first Thursday of every month. So that will be set for Thursday, December third at seven P M.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Alderman Belsa? Tom?
Municipal Services meeting that was originally scheduled for November twenty-third has now been canceled in that most of the items on that are on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Tom. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's police committee meeting was canceled due to lack of agenda items. Our next one is scheduled for Monday, December twenty-first at six P M on the police training room across the park or on Zoom. I'm assuming.
Thank you very much. Takes us to questions and comments that are agenda-related. I don't believe we have anybody in the audience, so we'll move on from that to our business. We have no old business. So we'll move to the consent agenda. For the sake of the audience, we move items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, and and are to the new to consent agenda. I'll read those. Consideration of a motion to approve a resolution waiving the competitive bidding process and approving a proposal extension with Orange Crush LLC, the Tubminist Product, is required for various public works, projects at specified unit prices. Consideration.
Consideration of a motion to approve a resolution waiving the competitive bidding process and approving a proposal extension with Royal Crane LLC. The tipping and transfer fees of proposed unit prices for certain generated waste from various public works projects. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution waiving the competitive bidding process and approving a proposal extension with X B E LLC to provide trucking services relating to hauling waste generated from excavations from a period of May first, twenty twenty-one, thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution waiving the competitive bidding process and approving a proposal extension from J C Landscaping and Tree Service Incorporated at the proposed schedule of prices for the real yard drainage assistance program for a period of May first, twenty twenty-one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a proposal extension from R G L two incorporated at the schedule of prices for the placement of topsoil and for the purchase and placement of fertilizer on the landscape restoration services for a period of May first, twenty twenty-one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a proposal extension with Tree Services Incorporated for topsoil at specified unit prices in various public works projects for a period of May first, twenty twenty-one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a proposal extension with Seville Water Service Products for the U S Pipe Fire Hydro Repair Parts as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty-one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a proposal extension with Seville Water Service Products Incorporated for the water and cider cider repair parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty-one through August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Item I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a proposal extension with Seville Water Service Products for Traverse City Fire Hydro Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May first, twenty twenty-one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Item J, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a proposal extension to D J USA Incorporated for the East Jordan Water Master five B R two fifty. to DJ USA Incorporated for the East Jordan Water Master five-BR-two-fifty and East Jordan Water Master five-CD-two-fifty fire hydro repair parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May first, 2021 through April thirtieth, 2022. Item K, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a contract extension for the 2021 Landscape Civilization Program between the City of Darien and Eternal Green Lawn Incorporated, six for various fertilizer applications and three applications with planting beds in to exceed twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Item L, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract extension for the 2021 Landscape Maintenance Services between the City of Darien and Severt Landscaping Company in the amount not to exceed sixty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-forty-eight dollars for the foundation. Seventy-fifth Street Planting Beds, Block Tower, City Bog Complex, and Entranceway Planting Ground. Item M, consideration of a motion to approve the authorization of a contingency with Severt Landscaping Company in the amount of five-thousand-five-hundred dollars for replacement of plant materials and plant enhancements for the 2021 Landscape Maintenance Service. Item N, consideration of a motion to approve ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the City of Darien. Item R, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Willson Consulting, Retell Communications Consulting, and Project Management Services in an amount not to exceed four-thousand-two-hundred dollars. Motion to approve. Alderman Bellzett, second to Alderman Kenny and the roll.
Bellzett.
Hi.
Kenny.
Hi.
Sullivan.
Hi.
Vaughn.
Hi.
Gustafson.
Hi.
Five ayes and two absent.
Can't hear you, Joe.
We're considering item, what was formerly item O, which is now new business item A. Consideration of a motion to approve ordinance granting a series of variations to allow the construction for electronic message board sign. For PZC twenty-two-nine, University Dermatology, eight-one-one-zero-south south, pin number Motion to approve. Alderman Bellzett? Second, Alderman Vaughn, end discussion. Mary?
I guess I have a couple of questions still for the petitioner.
He's coming forward.
Well, hi. Thank you again for coming to the podium. What else, what will be displayed on the sign during the hours that the Planning and Zoning Committee have recommended?
They'll display the hours of operation and then the different businesses that are in that building, because there's multiple doctors that are in that building. That's what I'm aware of. I don't know if there's anything else, but that's primarily what will be displayed, and they'll have to be displayed in sixty-second increments. So it's not like they'll be flashing, and they'll have to be there for sixty seconds.
Will they be advertising anything like, you know, a promotion or something like that?
I think that could be a possibility, but I know the primary reason is to inform their patients of, you know, the location and like the doctors that are practicing there.
Okay, but there's a possibility that promotion or advertising say for like a dermatological product or something like that could be advertised on the sign?
Based on what the ordinance approving it, I think that's allowed, but I don't think that's what the petitioner wants to be, wants to put up there. It's more informational regarding that business location, less about promotion.
Okay, and is the sign going to go in the same physical place as the current sign?
Yes, it's the same exact size as the current sign. It's just, they're just replacing it with, a portion of it will be electronic, but it's all the same difference.
And they think that will make a difference in directional?
Yes, they do that. They think that will make it a lot easier for their patients to locate their business because they're having difficulty right now.
And do they own the building or is it a rental?
They own the building.
Okay, but it's the same type of building as the veterinary clinic, just to the south of it, correct?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
And don't the signs currently match for both buildings?
I believe they do match.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering my questions.
No problem.
Any other questions? If not, the roll.
I, could I, could we talk a little bit more?
No, we're done.
We're done?
No. I didn't see you raise your hand, Mary.
I'm sorry, no, I thought you were asking if there was any more questions. I just wanted to know.
I did, I was asking.
Okay, I guess my hesitation, I mean, I'm pro-business. I want to do everything I can to help residents, but my hesitation is, like what Mike mentioned after I spoke earlier, was that we're going to see this popping up all over the place. And, you know, if you, if you're familiar with that, those office complex, and like I said, I'm a customer of Burr Ridge Vet, I'm a customer of University Dermatology, I mean, the signs are similar. So I think what's going to possibly happen next is then are we going to see Burr Ridge Vet wanting to change their signs? And then like, is every sign along KSC Avenue going to become a digital sign? And then the signs along, I think the intent of the sign ordinance up until now was like, you know, obviously schools communicating, you know, specific information and houses of worship. You know, I guess that's just my concern and my hesitation, especially since the sign is going to be in the same physical location as the current sign. I just feel like what they're trying to accomplish and their concern is of getting people to the clinic on time, A, people are repeat visitors because they're patients, so once you've gone there, you should know how to get back there, and B, if it's a directional issue, then you should be communicating that when you do, every doctor's office does, reminder emails, texts, calls, all of that.
Yeah, I chaired Municipal Services many years ago before First America made their request for the electronic sign they have in their window, and that went against our code. And there was a lot of debate on that.
Because people were concerned about flashing signs. We set conditions for it, but because we knew this was the business, we approved it. And we have since approved Chucks and we've approved other locations as well. I think it would be wrong to deny the dermatology associated group here an electronic sign based on where we think this might go. I think we have control over where this might go with regard to how we reform that as ordinance. So I think we need to be open-minded about now. You don't agree with that, that's fine. It's just my take on it, having sat on the Municipal Services all those years and seen these changes take place. Alderman Kenny?
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Sullivan, Alderman person Sullivan, who agreed with me, but the answer that Ms. Walzak had given that the reason that for the need for the sign was because their clients were coming late, I thought the answer that was rather weak to her point. Every place that having trouble, people getting through appointments on time or they're going to have to put electronic sign, I didn't think that was, that was a valid answer. However, I do know that, you know, Chucks is a block down, they've got electronic sign. I know Arlenia Peace has electronic sign. It's just, it's just, it's just a way of the future. And I think that if you sit back and, you know, our planning and zoning gives you a vote of six oh, that means they, a lot of those people talked about it at length. I think as a council, if we keep going back and keep getting unanimous votes from planning zoning and we go the other way, I think that sends a wrong message as a council.
Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, I, like, I think everybody knows I'm a strong proponent of electronic sign, so I'm still hoping we're going to get one down at Dunkin' Donuts. The building will look better. But I just don't see how we can deny certain businesses from having, from having some and then others get to have the electronic message board. So I think we've, you know, if there's a business need there, then we should allow that to happen.
Mike Corrigan?
Well, yeah, I've got to throw my two cents in here. Again, Mary, you bring up a very good point with the business immediately to the south, veterinarian, whether they're going to require it. I also have my office building in the complex just to the south of that, and the next building just south of the veterinary clinic is a Blue Cross Blue Shield building, and they also already come into the city for an annual waiver to put up a temporary sign during this Medicare enrollment period that they get. I think it's a three-month waiver on that, that they are able to put that up. Also, if you remember, Mayor, back a couple of years ago, there was an immediate care building immediately to the south, which would be the fourth property south of this, and they came in for a variance to put up a lighted sign on the side of their building, which our association didn't approve, but the city overrode that again, it's a medical facility and for, again, identifying it. Well, now you could potentially have four businesses almost in a row there that need their identity brought out. So again, I think you're just replicating it in too many places, just from my experience on the planning commission and how very easily I could see it happening in this area where, again, I've got one of my office building.
I mean, I served on planning and zoning for a few years, and I very much respect the work they do. And like, you know, Alderman Kenny said, having a six oh unanimous vote holds a ton of weight with me. My only concern is big picture here. And, I mean, I know you guys are saying that this is the way of the future, and this almost kind of dates back to what Alderman Clistic has said in terms of like architectural standards. I mean, I know we have electronic signs already. I just don't believe the community would be better served by electronic signs in front of every business up and down KSC Avenue, Seventy-Fifth Street, Plainfield, and Rowdy Three. And, you know, like I said, I'm assessing this situation as its own individual, not going to, you know, reward or punish them based on what's to come. I just feel like there's going to be a lot more to come, especially right next door, and I still don't believe the reasoning for the sign, you know, it's going to make that much of a difference since the sign's going to be in the same location. And I think what might end up happening is it'll be filled with, you know, advertising for things outside of what the doctor's offices and hours are and even the address of the business. Maybe they need to modify the current sign to make it, you know, more visible from the street in terms of the address and the name of the stagnant letters.
You know, Alderman Sullivan, I could see if this sign was going to be strictly a big digital sign, kind of like what was proposed at KSC and Plainfield, but this kind of looks like they're keeping the integrity of this from the diagram I'm looking at. It looks like they're kind of keeping the integrity of the sign with just a portion of the center of it is electronic. So I don't think, I don't think it's going to make us look like the Las Vegas Strip by any stretch of imagination. I think it's going to, I think it's going to do what they need to do, and I think it's a, it's a good compromise.
Alderman Bellzett?
Yeah, we're not voting today on changing our code. We are doing this on a case-by-case basis. In this particular case, I don't think the sign takes away from the integrity of that strip there. It's the exact same size. We're not asking for something that's big, gaudy, and a big change. If you look at, you know, which, and I know I'm saying they're gaudy, but if we, the signs we approved for on Rowdy Three and for Chucks were substantially different than what had been there previously. This, we're looking at identical sign in the same spot. It's just now it has more lighting and has a digital message. I don't believe it really changes it all that much. And again, I'd still like to do this on a case-by-case basis. I mean, if someone comes, if the, you know, other buildings on KSC want to put up something big and that we don't find attractive, we certainly can still say no at that point. So I'm supporting it today.
Anyone else? If no one else, then the roll.
Belzett?
Hi.
Vaughn? Vaughn?
Hi.
Sullivan?
No.
Kenny?
Hi.
Gustafson?
Hi.
Four ayes, one day, and two absent.
Motion passes. Item P, consideration of a motion to approve ordinance levying taxes for general and special purposes for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May twenty-twenty and ending the thirtieth day of April twenty-twenty-one for the City of Darien, Illinois. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny? Seconded by Alderman Sullivan. And I'm going to ask Brian to provide an explanation of this so our Rosins understand how we arrive at our levy, Brian?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me? The Alderman can hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, good. This is the annual tax levy that the city and all taxing bodies in Illinois need to review and approve. The, in Illinois, there's a property tax cap, however, the City of Darien, being a home real municipality, is not subject to that tax cap, which has typically been the CPI, five percent of the CPI, whichever is lower. However, the city's property tax levy for years now, and I tried to look back and I don't have the number of years, but it's been many years now there. The city has taken the levy from the previous year and requested a zero extension to that levy for many years. So a large portion of the property tax here goes to our police pension fund, and we have a small amount, just under two-hundred thousand, that we, the councils have been able to allocate towards the general fund. We have one small bond payment available. There's two other bond payments as part of the property tax that the city council has typically abated for many years because it's collected in our water rates. Those are a couple of bonds that were for the water fund. So again, the city council did look at this already on, uh, on October nineteenth, which was the tax levy determination, and the final ordinance presented tonight is exactly the same as the determination.
Any questions for the council? If not, the roll.
Kenny?
Hi.
Sullivan? Vaughn?
Hi.
Gustafson?
Hi.
Belzett?
Hi.
Five ayes and two absent.
Motion passes. Item Q, consideration of a motion to approve ordinance levying and assessing the taxes for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May twenty-twenty and ending on the thirtieth day of April twenty-twenty-one. And for the City of Darien Special Service Area, known as area number, known as Territorial Area. Motion to approve. Mary Sullivan, seconded by Tom Bellzett. Any questions or comments? This is for the, what's on the record? No questions? Alderman?
Sullivan?
Hi.
Belzett?
Hi.
Gustafson?
Hi.
Kenny?
Hi.
Vaughn?
Hi.
Five ayes and two absent.
Motion passes. That takes us through our agenda tonight, takes us to questions and announcements and announcements of a general nature. Just like to announce that this last weekend.
The Darien Lions.
Yes, here you go.
I have to talk this long, or else I echo term with the rock to say, that's why I'm talking, I'm sorry about that, but if I talk louder, we get a sense of echo. The Darien Lions Club approved three-hundred-and-thirty flags as part of their flag program, being very successful in the year. Those of you who participated, the Lions Club appreciates your efforts, and I think this is a good demonstration of our patriotism as a community. And I think this is a good demonstration of our patriotism as a community. So I want to say thank you to the Lions Club for their efforts. I also like to thank or recognize, um, Kathy and Vito Abadi. Kathy and Vito and their family are participating in the Family Feud, which is on WFLD. I think today was their fourth day. They've won each of those four days tomorrow will be their fifth day. And it's really nice to see, uh, Steve Harvey open up the show and say, and the Abadi family from Darien, Illinois. Uh, it's a nice recognition for us. Kathy and her family are doing really, put down really well. We're, we're proud of them. This was something they did in August, by the way, when they were down in Atlanta, Georgia. So we don't know the results yet, but Kathy's own achievement, I wanted to bring, I wanted people to know that we've got this family and our community. And, um, it brought, it brings some recognition to the city of Darien, and we're real proud of the Abadi family. Mary, anyone else? Joe?
22,335 day total for four days. If they win tomorrow, they get a card.
They got a card. Very happy for them. Anything else? Mary?
Um, I want to echo you, your sentiments about the flag program. Um, it was just, um, wonderful how the Lions Club did that. Um, I saw with each passing month, as I walked my dog about town, more and more flags go up. A lot of communities and subdivisions like mine put a flag up at the entranceway. So I really hope when the program, um, comes back online in, uh, 2021 that, uh, the same people and more, um, prescribe to it because it's, um, it's an amazing thing and, um, run by a great group of volunteers. So thank you, Lions Club. Um, I want to say I've got my Darien Women's Club shirt and pin on tonight. I'm a very proud, longstanding, card-carrying Darien Women's Club member and, um, very thankful for the great leadership we have and the, the group of women that have put together, um, and modified it many times, the 50th anniversary celebration because of COVID and gotten very creative. But you should see signs popping up all around town. They had one with them tonight. It'll be in front of City Hall yard signs, um, you know, showing our pride for Darien Women's Club being, um, a part of Darien for 50 years. Pretty much, you know, the, this, the, the city's 51 years. So they're right on the heels of, um, you know, the onset of the community. And they do amazing, wonderful things for Darien and our surrounding communities. And, um, I want to thank them and say, um, they always welcome new members and it's a great way to meet people.
Um, I'd like to note a change in program here. Uh, we normally have archery ceremonies at the Ole School on the first Sunday in December. And it usually involves Santa Claus coming and choir, the Boy Scouts or the Cub Scouts, and families gather. And then people go downstairs and have cocoa and they get to sit on Santa's lap. This year, that's going to change because of COVID. This year on December 6th, yours truly, will be in front of Ole School with Steve Harvey. And we will light the tree, but there will be no visiting inside. For those who do want to participate, the Historical Society will have a caravan of cars that will enter the parking lot by, uh, Safety Village and travel in Ole School. And right there at Historical Society, Santa Claus will give each child from each car a packet with a packet of cocoa and a candy cane. And they will then exit the far exit onto 77th Street. And this is going to be from 1 to, from 4 to 4:30 on Sunday, December 6th. So if you're interested, you need to be coming southbound on Cass Avenue and turn into the lot at Safety Village and proceed in front of the school. And again, we will try to light some. It's not going to be a big ceremony this year, but we will. Bo that switch and turn those lights on. But I'm saying this tonight as opposed to if you have children who want to see Santa Claus and get your packet of cocoa and your candy cane. That will be Sunday, December 6th. Any question? If none, motion to adjourn. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Caver.
Hi.
Hi.
Take care, folks.
Hi.
Take care.
Have a safe Thanksgiving, everybody.
You too, Mary.
Turning the microphones off.